Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you to Buddy and his group for hosting this debate. Thank you to Jack and Jim for moderating and volunteering their time. And thank you to New Bedford Guide and New Bedford Cable Access for really providing a great community service by hosting this debate and by filming and covering this debate tonight. Good evening, everyone, again. My name is Ian Abrew. I am your councillor at large. I have been one of your councillors at large now for the last four years. And it has really been the honor of my professional life to serve on the New Bedford City Council. You know, whether it's been giving the residents of this city tireless, open, honest, transparent constituent service, being on the forefront of working with our law enforcement professionals in regard to public safety, working with our department heads to ensure that all of our needs are met here in the city of New Bedford, helping to drive new economic development and new industry in New Bedford, co-sponsoring a comprehensive wage theft legislation ordinance, which helps our working and middle-class families here in the city. I have spent this last four years, and this last two years in particular, in office completely dedicated toward moving our community forward collectively with all of us together. But I can't do it alone. I need all of your support. That's why I'm running for reelection as your councillor at large, Ian Abrew. And again, thank you to the voters and taxpayers of New Bedford for the faith you showed in me in the preliminary election two weeks ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian, for taking care of all the pleasantries. My name is Leo Choquet. I'm running for city councillor at large. And I just want to introduce myself as the guy that wasn't here last time. I apologize to everybody. I had a personal matter that kept me from coming in. But I'm here now. And there are a lot of things that this city is capable of. We've come a long way in the last 10 years. I can remember back in 1999, 2000, 2005, the city was a much different place. And while we've moved ahead leaps and bounds, we still have some problems that we have to address. I would be ignorant if I said we didn't. Now, I'm probably one of the few councillors up here who can say that I'm highly vested in this ward, okay? Now, I live in Ward 1. However, I grew up right over here, 60 South 2nd Street. Some of you know that as Harborview Towers. That's where I grew up, okay? I tied my first shoelaces on my own in the parking lot behind here, okay? The first time I ever rode a bike without training wheels, it was down South 2nd. And if my mother ever found out, she'd still kill me. So I have a lot of memories of this area, okay? And also, in addition to that, I own my own small financial planning practice on South 6th. So I'm here every day in this ward. And I want to be this ward's watchdog as far as the at-large councillors go. I grew up here. My business interests lie here.
Choquet, thank you very much.
And I will be here. Thank you.
Again, I would also like to thank everybody for being here this evening. My name is Paul Chase. I am running for councillor at large. Born and raised in the north end of New Bedford, lived the last 11 years in the west end of New Bedford. My kids both graduated from New Bedford High School. We have a vested interest in this community, and we're very proud and we love this community a lot. So I'm running for many reasons. A few of the key issues are taxes, taxes, and taxes. Another issue is infrastructure, roads, and sidewalks. Another area is economic development, which will help with some of those other areas I was talking about, as well as safety. These are all important to the city of New Bedford. We have come a long way, but there is still a long way to go. And I think every so often, it's good to get new faces into the city council. You know, there are 11 city councillors. There's almost 100,000 people in the city of New Bedford. So once in a while, to have a different councillor at large come in with different backgrounds, ideas, and perspectives is always a good thing. And I'm asking for your vote on November 5th. Thank you.
Again, these opening statements won't deter please Ms. White.
Hi, I'm Lisa White. I promise that's the only time I'm going to say hi tonight. It's time to take back New Bedford.
Can't beat that. Good evening, everyone. I'm really proud to say that I am Deborah Coelho, and I am your city councillor at large and have been for the past 14 years. I come from the grassroots. I come from very, very humble beginnings. I came here as an immigrant at the age of five. I grew in the city of New Bedford. I went through the school systems. And it's amazing to me that I am where I am today because I believe in personal growth and I believe in that same growth for the city of New Bedford. If I can do what I've done at my age, imagine what good future we can do for our children. I really believe in that. I'm also very honest, and I'm very true, and I'm good to my word. And also, I really love it when people tell me they trust me. I am a master seamstress. I work on wedding gowns. I have my own business. I love public service because I feel I'm a natural fit and I'm a good representative for the city of New Bedford. I'm yours. I have been yours. And I'm a public servant whether I am in office or not. I was an activist for 14 years. I love serving the community. I think we should all do that. And I also wanted not just thank you folks for being here, but I wanted to thank this panel of the councils at large and also not just incumbents, but the challengers. I love that kind of democracy. I think that's really important. Thank you very much. Deborah Coelho, city councillor at large.
Thank you. I am Naomi Carney, and I'm your city councillor at large. And I want to thank the panel, and I want to thank Buddy for hosting this debate. I have been your city councillor for the past six years, and I'm looking to continue. And I'm asking for your vote on November 1st. I'm very hardworking. I am a grassroots city councillor. I've been in New Bedford for the majority of my life. I grew up at Blue Meadows Projects. My great-grandmother lived on South 2nd Street. I've been in the city for very many, many years. I was educated at UMass Dartmouth, well, SMU, now UMass Dartmouth. And New Bedford matters to me. That's why I am running and stay running for city councillors. I work hard. I do a lot of constituent services. I listen to the people. I like to go to community meetings because that's where you get your information. That's where you find out what the problems are in your neighborhood. Believe it or not, most of the neighborhood problems are very similar. But quality of life is what counts here. That includes taxes, roads, schools. Everything that you look at in the city of New Bedford is a quality of life issue. And I'm here to help the process, to make it better. And I've been here doing that. I'm honest. I'm hardworking. And if you need me, I'll be there. Naomi Carney, city councillor at large. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Carlos Felix, running for councillor at large. Just wanted to thank Mike from New Bedford Guide for providing this for the people. If it wasn't for you and cable access, people wouldn't be seeing this at home. And it does bring back memories coming here. This is the first school that I've ever attended because it was bilingual. I was born here, but I spoke Portuguese first. And my family, my parents are first generation from the island of Tercera in the Azores. And I've lived here my entire life. I didn't just move in here recently. Been here vested my entire life. And I'd like to be your voice on the city council if you'd give me a chance. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Linda Morad, and I currently have the honor and the privilege of serving as one of the New Bedford City Councilors at large. I love the job that I do in the New Bedford City Council. I think that people have come to know me to be an independent leader on the council. I certainly have, over the last 14 years, developed a base of experience, not only about the way that the city works, but the way the residents of our city live in the various neighborhoods, the way our various departments work to service the residents of the city, and just the overall operation of our city government. And so I'm very pleased to continue my role as a New Bedford city councillor, and I hope that the residents of the city will recognize that I have served them well over my term as a New Bedford city councillor, and will give me the opportunity to continue that service. Thank you all for being here tonight. It's nice to see so many people in the room. And thank you for everyone that made this evening possible.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Brian Gomes, and I'm a candidate for reelection to councillor at large. Let me first say thank you to Buddy and the organization here for sponsoring these debates. Without him doing this, maybe we don't get a voice out to the people of the city. I have been a strong voice for the people of the city. I don't care what issue it is, whether it's parallel projects, it's a teacher, getting assaulted, it's a problem in the neighborhood, I've been that voice, not afraid to stand up, not afraid to be heard, not afraid to address the issue and come to some conclusion. A lot of times in my political career, all I have to do is open my mouth or address an issue, and action follows. I like to continue that, given the opportunity. November 5th, I'd like one of your five votes for councillor at large.
Last but not least. Okay, I'm Mike Chanson. And there's a lot of issues that are confronting our city in this election year. One of them is tax increases. How do we solve it? How do we solve the fact that our taxes go up year after year after year and it never stops? Well, it's got to stop. We have to cut spending, and that's the job of a city councillor, to cut spending. That's a big issue here. And a city's only as good as its revenue. And that goes hand in hand with why taxes are going up. Our economic development team, they can't bring it. They don't bring it. They've let us down big time. So what do we need to do? We need to get a new economic development team. Another issue that nobody wants to, I know the mayor doesn't want to speak on this, and I doubt any of the councillors want to speak on it, is wind power and the adverse effects to wind power, the adverse effects to wind power here, whether it's with the fishing industry or with the consumer. Thank you.
Where should addiction treatment centers be located in New Bedford?
Out of neighborhoods.
Whereabouts?
Not in the backyard of anybody's neighborhood. Now, we, okay, oh, the one, okay. Do you want to be specific about the one in Ward 5? Are you asking me about that? That's not a treatment, addiction center. That's where somebody would go to get a prescription. I'm against it being there, if that's what you want.
No, I'm looking for where they should be located, not where they should not be located.
Out of neighborhoods. Not in someone's backyard. They have one, they have one down here in the south end at the, one of the mills, am I correct? Right? Yeah. Okay, well, that's where they belong. They shouldn't be in someone's backyard. I don't know how much more specific I can be on that issue. They don't belong in someone's neighborhood. Anything else you want to ask me on that?
Thank you.
Okay.
Same question.
Well, I think you know where I stand on this. I don't believe that they belong in the neighborhoods, in residential neighborhoods. We are believers in the city of treatment, and what has been put upon our city and many other cities is no fault of anyone but the producers of the drugs and what is going on with a lot of people. But to take them out of the element and take them out of the city, and not completely out of the city, but to an industrial area or somewhere away from where all the activities are, to put them where they are and the position that they are, that's what I feel is the most appropriate. I like the north end location. I like the south end location. And as a city councillor, this is not the first time dealing with this issue. We've dealt with it for a couple of times. And I am one of them councillors to step forward, telling these organizations, we would always be an open hand and to help them find a suitable location. But residential neighborhoods is not where you go, and residential neighborhood is not where you bring these people to, whether it's in the west end, historical area, south end, you just don't.
Same question, councillor Warren. In national zones, is that where addiction treatment centers?
Or in commercial zones, but not in a backyard. The problem with them going in a residential backyard is what happens a year after the establishment is in place. And we've seen that over and over. Yes, everybody says, yes, we're going to police, yes, we're going to do this, yes, we're going to do that. But a year down the road, when nobody's watching, that's when we have the problems. People in the city pay taxes. They bought those homes in that area knowing that they were living in a residential neighborhood. And to place a treatment or an addiction center in that neighborhood after someone's purchased the home is not correct in my mind. So there are commercial districts in the city where we have plenty of traffic going by on a regular basis. There's bus routes going by to those locations for those people that need the treatment and don't have the ability to get there. That's where they belong. They don't belong somewhere where there are children or where there are elderly people who are established in that neighborhood. And I'll do whatever I can, and as councillor Gomes said, we've done this twice before, to help people locate in an area where it's appropriate. I've done that myself in the north end twice now. That's what we should do, to work together to make sure that they're going where they are not going to disturb a residential neighborhood.
I can agree pretty much with what the councillors and the candidate has said. But what amazes me is, when it came to the marijuana, they put all these hoops in a way where you, they had buffers and zoning. How come this hasn't been done for this situation? We've been through this before. This isn't like this is anything new. This is all new. This has happened before. We've had the residents come in front of the city and be upset about this type of business locating near their homes. I would think the best way to resolve it would be to create some sort of zoning or buffer, not allowing these type of businesses to be near homes, near schools, just like they did with the cannabis.
I guess I'll just add for the rest of the people, is it safe to have addiction treatment centers in industrial zones?
I don't know. I mean, that's a good question that you would have to maybe speak. What do you mean by not safe? I don't understand.
Industrial zones, there's a lot of stuff that goes on. I know we have addiction treatment centers down by the child and cycling centers.
No, I'm thinking more like down in the north end, near the old theater, that area off of the King's Highway, that's set back, not near the houses or anything. But, you know, that's just one example. You know, the council should have a list by now, I would think, of locations that is proper. But like I said, to prevent it from being right next door to homes, you could use a zoning to combat that.
Could you repeat the question?
Make sure that addiction treatment centers be located in New Bedford. What I'm trying to get at, councillor Carney, is most of our, a lot of our neighborhoods in New Bedford are a mixture of residential and commercial areas. I think the one in Ward 5 is something like that. So, you know, we have a large opioid addiction problem in New Bedford. So the question is, you know, most neighborhoods will don't want this. So where can we go?
Well, you're right. We do have a large opioid problem in the city. But these treatment facilities are not only for New Bedford residents. They're from everywhere. So my suggestion is maybe we should look at Fons Connor Road and different places where we need to talk to these treatment facilities and try to help them locate in other places that are wooded and not in residential neighborhoods. We've got kids on bikes. We've got grandmothers. We've got people walking who want to feel safe walking, and they don't feel safe if there's a treatment plant in the neighborhood because you are bringing people with addictions in. And you do not want that exposed to your children. We're trying to keep the children away from this. So residential neighborhood, absolutely not. There are places in New Bedford, and we do have to work on zoning. As the councillors, we've been speaking about that now, looking into something so we can stop this in the future. We do not want to start treatment. We do not want to stop all this thing. We want to help the addicts because everybody, I know that everybody has somebody, whether it's a brother, sister, cousin, uncle, aunt, mother, who is addicted, who is addicted to opioids, and we need, and they need help. We have to look at the guys up in Boston and the federal government because they're the ones who pulled that money back for the places that we had and facilities. We had Taunton opened up there where we used to send people. So we need to, yes, we need to find other places. Thank you.
This is quite a, quite the question considering we want to get reelected, right? So I say it like it is. I've been one of the ones that has been saying that we have so many overdoses in the city of New Bedford with repeat overdoses. In the same day, 24 hours, somebody can OD three, four times. I've seen it. It's not a pretty sight. I tried to bring it through the council about St. Luke's having a facility in there where at least they keep them for 24 hours to evaluate them. They don't do that. They want them out of there. Nobody wants to deal with these people. They're pretty messy. I understand that. I also live in a neighborhood where I've seen it all. And I'm going to tell you, there's a lot of good people that do drugs. This is, this is where we're at. So I've been an advocate to try to get treatment in New Bedford. We also have state level and federalism, which allows the right of travel. So you can get treated in New Bedford even if you don't live in New Bedford because after all, we do have a hospital. We're not going to ask you where you're from before we treat you. So it's very difficult for me, and I've been really struggling with this. I understand that people don't want it in their backyards. That's the natural reaction. But these are not bad people. They deserve treatment. Everybody that's addicted, wherever there's people, there should be treatment centers. And I don't want to marginalize these folks that need that. I'm very compassionate about that. And I know it's election year, and I know I'm probably going to lose votes with it, but let's not be afraid to give people treatment because the ones that want treatment are the ones with the greatest hope for a good future like we all have. Thank you.
Everyone wants to say not in my backyard, but that's where the problem is. I look out my window, actually, I live right next to you, and we need a treatment center there. But it's not popular. So I think the most appropriate place for a treatment center is going to be right next to City Hall.
So obviously, this is a very serious subject when it comes to opiates and the issue that's going on. So if we set aside that for a second, which we all know, there are a lot of issues that we need to deal with. It didn't happen in a day, and it won't be cured in a day. The question, I believe, is really about where it should go. And, you know, one of the questions I have is, we have a lot of folks up here that have said it should be in certain areas, but the zoning has yet to be passed. So I think it's time the city council get on this. And if I get in, if I get elected, it will be something that I will work on. There are two issues when it comes to locations. Number one is where to locate it. And number two is to have hard discussions with some of our surrounding cities and towns who bring people into the city for these types of recovery programs, and they don't necessarily take responsibility for their own people. And when I say their own people, I mean their residents. We have residents we need to take care of, and we should have some discussions with some of the surrounding communities about the residents they should help take care of too. This shouldn't be an all-on-New Bedford thing. We shouldn't have to expend all of our resources. We should be doing this in partnership together. And zoning is what needs to happen in the city to take care of this particular issue.
So like a lot of you, my family has had issues with opiates. I very nearly lost my first cousin. He got addicted to pain pills, and that's how it generally starts. And without a prescription to continue on with those pain pills, he had to get heroin on the street. He lost his family. He lost his home. He had a million-dollar masonry business all gone. He didn't even care about it. He was stealing pocketbooks out of the Panthers Club, and he used to be one of the vice presidents of that club. So that just destroyed him, okay? Now, where would we put a treatment facility? Obviously, from a geographical standpoint, nobody wants it in their backyard. And we, it's not something that we want to have sticking out downtown, okay? We need to keep it away from children, away from businesses, and especially away from residents. So the logical place, in my opinion, would be on Pope's Island. Heck, we even have the old foxy lady that's just sitting there unused. That's the most isolated place in the city away from residents, I think. But again, we have to, if that's not an option, we need to zone and work on zoning. And if I'm elected, I would be more than happy to work with the other city councillors to, you know, figure this out.
So we don't want to marginalize folks who have suffered from addiction and who need help. Like many on this table, many in this room, I too have personally dealt with the unfortunate situation regarding opioid addiction in my personal family, you know, and it's a very awful, awful matter that we all have to deal with. But these are all human beings who need passionate, compassionate help and care. I think we all can agree with that. My concern, and I was at the meeting last Saturday at the Law Library with a few other of my colleagues, we're talking about public safety, making sure that these spots are zoned correctly in the right areas of the city so that the individuals who do need this treatment do need this help, they're not off the beaten path, they can get easy access to and from, but they're not in the back door of a child or an elderly resident. I think that's the key. There'll be plenty of planning board and zoning board meetings ahead. And I think the role of a legislator is to listen to both sides, the proponents and opponents, when these go before the appropriate boards, and then communicate with our constituency what's happening in the next steps. I think that's very important. Time's up?
Yeah. Thank you. I'm interested in the offshore wind question that one of the challengers brought up. You may be, maybe faced with the option or the opportunity, or maybe not so much an opportunity, to have to decide between offshore wind and fishing. It is probably a real possibility. You're going to have to vote on that kind of question. I know there's a lot of work being done, talking to the wind industry and fishing industry trying to resolve these questions. But how do you, you know, how do you address these kinds of issues? And what comes first? Wind or fishing?
Well, I think Richie Canastro has done a fantastic job trying to shepherd along the dialogue between both sides. But that's the key. Dialogue needs to happen, and it really hasn't been happening between the offshore wind industry and the commercial fishing industry. That's the problem. Of course, if you're going to pin, you know, a politician or an elected official or a candidate up against the wall, and you, and you, the question is offshore wind or fishing, well, then I'm going to say fishing. We're the number one commercial fishing port in the United States. We have been 16 years in a row. We continue to be, just by dollar amount catch. So of course, we want to support our commercial fishing, but we also want to try to dovetail that in with offshore wind. This can have a robust economic impact on New Bedford. But I've been saying it for years, offshore wind can't be the only tool in our economic development tool belt, okay? We need to diversify our economic development portfolio. And I don't think we've been doing that as germanely as we should. So you talk about offshore wind, that's fantastic. It has to work in conjunction with fishing. Wind needs to be one and the same. If they can't make it work, then they can't make it work. But again, Richie Canastro has done a fantastic job trying to get the two sides together.
Choquet.
Same question, right?
Right, same question.
Obviously, like Ian said, this is the number one commercial fishing port in America, maybe even North America. So we have to go with what works. That's what's kept us alive for many years as a city. Now, I'm definitely a proponent for change and for growth, especially in the wind farms, in biomanufacturing, cannabis. I mean, the problem with this city is that we don't have enough revenue coming in. I mean, we have some of the highest property taxes in Bristol County. We have the eighth highest property taxes for commercial property taxes in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts out of 354. So if we lose that fishing port, we are going to, it is going to be a long winter, okay? We need to hold on to that. In addition to that, we have to find ways to build revenue. The economic development has to be improved. We have to have more money coming in. That's the most important thing, so that we can start to lower these taxes because they are out of control. So without that fishing port, this, the city could collapse.
So I don't believe this is an either-or topic. I think both can coexist. Obviously, the fishing port is number one to New Bedford, but I do believe that both businesses can coexist. The bigger question I have is, like the other gentleman has said, is the greater economic development, not just the wind power, but we have a whole but we have a whole waterfront down there that needs to begin developing mixed use. We need restaurants, we need condos, we need small businesses, we need large industrial businesses. We need a convention center. We need all of these things in the economic development scheme, not just wind power. Wind power and fishing can coexist, but we need to be thinking bigger than just wind power. We need to be thinking broader economic development.
I'm from Alaska, so I'm going to go with fishing. In Alaska, we have this awesome thing. It's called a fish tax. And what it is, is our state government there has recognized that when you have a working waterfront, you're giving up a lot in the way of a tax levy. You don't have those big residential properties down on the water that are worth millions and millions, you know, paying into the revenue source. So what they do is the state takes all of the money from all the ports, and then if the city has a functioning port, the state will cover 10% of their expenses, which would be about $36 million here. That sounds really awesome to me. So just fishing.
So we're a city by the sea, and New Bedford is also leading in clean energy. Can fishing and can water and wind coexist with the fishing? Yes, I believe it really can. But we have to remember our history of the city of New Bedford, as painful as it is. We were a whale industry. We stopped fishing for whales. We did not collapse. We once lit the world because we were near the ocean. We are still near the ocean. Again, change is very, very hard, and it's very difficult, and it's very, very scary. I believe that water, wind, and our fishing can coexist. I hope I never have to choose, but let's face it. Wind, water is the future of New Bedford. It's what brought us here to the point where we are. And I'm looking forward to the future. I really, really believe that we found our answer in the water, and I believe that answer is still there, and we'll know what that answer is when we get to it. We just have to be brave. Thank you.
Thank you. Can wind turbines and the fishing industry exist, coexist? I'm not quite sure it can. The turbines go down so many feet, they rattle, they shake. If you go stand by the winter behaving, you can feel the vibration while you're in the industrial park. It's very sensitive to the fish. I don't think that can happen. Do I want the turbines? I want them built here. I want them built here, staged here, and shipped someplace else. As most of you know, I'm also an American Indian, and I'm from the Aquina tribe on Martha's Vineyard, and the tribe has put a stance, tribal people have said, "No wind turbines" because they know what has happened to the waters, other places where they've had the turbines in there. I'm not sure that the vibrations, whatever, will sustain our fishing industry, but it comes to the choice, it's the fishing industry, it's the sustenance of what we've done. My great-grandfather was a whaler. He's in, Amos Haskins' picture is in the Whaling Museum, sitting there, and he was one of our first great whalers here. So I mean, my history is here. We sustained on the waters from our tribal peoples going way back, and I'm not quite sure whether or not those wind turbines in our ocean are going to scare away our fish. Thank you.
One thing we don't want to do is put all our eggs in one basket. So I say we do need to look into any opportunities that could bring revenue to the city. But one thing we cannot let happen is not to do our homework, like what happened with the Parallel Products. And basically, an entire neighborhood might possibly be forced to have something in their neighborhood that they don't want because the councilors failed to do their homework. And we need to do lots of homework, do the research before we go forward with anything in regards to solar. And of course, the fishing industry must always be nurtured. We must do what we can to make sure that it's profitable.
I'm not sure if they can coexist in the same port. I think there's more dialogue that needs to happen, and there's certainly more work that needs to be done as it relates to that. But as someone else said on the panel a little while ago, my concern is that the promotion of wind as the next great thing in the city of New Bedford and putting your eggs in one basket. Economic development in the city is, it doesn't happen. It's just not here. And we, wind's not going to be the solution to that. We need to really diversify what we're doing. We need to make a big change in the economic development team here in the city of New Bedford so that, you know, things going forward, like Amazon going to another city, when we have the workforce and we have the land right here, that shouldn't happen. It should never happen. So again, I'm not sure they can coexist, but we also want to make sure that we remember that it's not just the boats in the water, it's all the shoreside services that go along with that, the fuel, the ice, the packaging, the transportation, the fish-cutting houses, all that. That's all the economic engine in the city of New Bedford. And just because you're not on a boat in the water doesn't mean you're not part of the fishing industry.
I think your question is, can wind and the fishing industry exist together? I'm going to first say that I'm going to stand up for the fishing industry. It's one of the most beautiful things in the city of New Bedford and has brought economic stimulus to a lot of different things. Now, as far as the wind is concerned, when they first came here and they were telling us about the wind, we supported it. I'm one of the supporters, let me speak for myself. I supported it because I believed in what I was being told about the jobs. But as you know, in the past year or so, I've started to question a $100-million location down here in the South End, and exactly what is it doing? Is there Plan A? Is there Plan B? Plan A is to take the wind turbines out of here and take them out to the ocean or wherever they're going. Is it going to happen? If it doesn't happen, what is the plan for $100 million to this staging area that has been built down there? So is there Plan B, so that we send cars out of here, fruit? We bring fruit. We transport all kinds of things back into the economics of this area and probably to the region. Can they both work together? That's still a discussion to be had. Again, you're starting to look at this wind thing. As I looked at it when it was first coming, is that it brings the jobs. Will it bring a low rate to your electricity? If it can't do that, then I'm really not sure what we're doing out there, and we may be disturbing our seaside and what has been our economic stimulants here in the city of New Bedford for a long time. So those questions will have to be answered.
No, they can't exist together. There's no possible way. Not only have we been lied to about the number of jobs that are going to come into this port because of wind. They say 100 jobs. We're lucky to get 10 from jobs from people from New Bedford. So that was a lie. It's not good for the fishing industry. It's not going to enhance any aspect of your life in any way. Matter of fact, it's going to do just the opposite. Your electric bill is going to more than double. The delivery charges that they're going to pass on to you, the consumer, are going to more than double. So I don't see how anybody can be for it. You're going to hurt your fishing industry. You're going to hurt the fishermen. You're going to hurt all the ancillary businesses that go along with our industry. And then you're going to double, more than double, your electric bill? Crazy. Have a good one.
Okay, Mr. Parker, again, there's been a lot of talk about taxes. One of the analysts said that New Bedford has some of the highest property taxes in Bristol County. I think most people would not dispute that. What can be done to reduce taxes in New Bedford in a big way? I'm not talking about a few salaries in the mayor's office. I'm talking about hundreds of dollars. What can be done to reduce taxes in a big way in New Bedford?
Well, we have a $400-million operating budget. They'll tell you it's less, but it's over $400 million. And it's increasing every year. Government's got too big. We have to go on austerity program. That means we've got to make cuts, cuts and spending. Now, one person over here in the last debate said that we can only cut up to 15%. Well, 15% amounts to $60 million. We need to just cut above $10 million, and we solve all our problems. What needs to be done is you bring your numbers down through attrition. You go on an austerity program and bring the number of municipal employees down, only temporarily. You don't rehire, you freeze on hiring, and through attrition only, you bring your numbers down. You don't fire anybody. Until a lousy economic development team brings us some new revenue. Because the whole, the whole idea of taxes not increasing is to get revenue. And we haven't got any new revenue sources for well over a decade. There's the issue. Lousy economic development team, then your taxes are going to go up. They're going to get the taxes. They, they're going to get it one way or another.
Mr. Jensen, thank you. I'm going to, I gave Mr. Jensen 90 seconds to answer this. This is a complex issue, so you've all got 90 seconds to answer this question.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Phillips. Taxes, taxes have been on an increase in the city of New Bedford, and this council has been questioning how the numbers even work from Boston down. So every two years, you know, 90 seconds is not enough time to explain this issue. But what it has to be done is in the city, is you have to be creative. And I've tried to be creative and tried to stimulate that. See, downtown can't close at 4 o'clock. We need more people coming into the city. It can't be our monies that are just going around in a circle like it's always, it's been for a long time. We need to attract people to the city. I have tried to do that. I wanted to bring a multipurpose stadium to the city of New Bedford, so it brought tourism to the city of New Bedford, whether it may be soccer, may be concerts, may it be a team that was located in here. I'm the counselor that also wanted to bring a convention center to the city of New Bedford and continue to work on trying to get people to realize to have some vision of what the city of New Bedford can be. This is our home. We want to share this home with everyone else, but it can't shut down. The city cannot shut down. We need to have people come here and spend money. We need to attract the tourism that the city rightfully deserves, and that won't be done until you put the right economic team together, the right plan of action so that it's a successful one, where we're draining, draining tax dollars that come from the outside, not the people themselves as it been. And while I got the mic, the past two years, I have not voted for the budget because I felt the people and the businesses were being taxed out of their wits. And most people think that the businesses can afford it. They can't. And many of our residents across the city live within their means. They cannot. If we were having a city that had good roads, good schools, with no problems, police always being able to be there, no firehouses being shut down, we can turn around when somebody says you pay high taxes down in the city of New Bedford. You're darn right we do, but look at the services that we get. We're A1 everywhere. That's not the case in scenario. That's what has to be done. What I have spoken of this evening has to be done. New Bedford cannot just shut down at 4 o'clock.
So it's not an easy problem to solve. And for the last 14 years, if you look, I've been the person offering budget cuts constantly every single year. But it takes eight people to vote to pass one of those. And as you've probably seen over the last many years, there's not a lot of consistency and agreement on the council as it relates to how we cut the budget. So some of the problem is some of the unfunded mandates that come from the state and from the government. Those need to change on the state level. People that represent the city of New Bedford and the surrounding towns in the House and the Senate in Massachusetts need to really take those bull, that bull by the horns and fix that. Working-class communities like New Bedford can't afford the unfunded mandates, the pension mandates, and many of, and the many, the healthcare issues, et cetera, that continue to plague the city's budget. But again, the problem is not just how we spend the money. The problem is that we don't raise money to offset how we spend it. And I said that the last debate, I've been saying that for a while now. We need revenue. And I don't mean revenue by, you know, increasing the fees when you pull a building permit. That's not what I'm looking for in revenue. I'm looking for a team of people who will bring business to the city of New Bedford, like was done in the business park when I represented the North End. And those businesses working in the city of New Bedford, that business park was nothing. And now it's a full, robust business park. Every single one of those businesses pays taxes. That's what's needed. We need another business park. We need somebody who's going out and bringing business to the city of New Bedford. Not only does it increase the revenue, but it'll create jobs.
Most definitely. You know, when you hear people saying you're going to cut the taxes, you're going to freeze the taxes, I cringe a little bit. I don't see it happening anytime soon. Like Ms. Moret was saying, the unfunded mandates and everything. But, you know, the revenue is the point. We need to bring up revenue. And when we have a council, and I hate to keep drumming on this, but people need to realize that when you're too strict on the zoning and you restrict an up-and-coming industry from coming into the city, that's going to have an impact. That's going to be money that's not raised, that's going to be taxes that gets raised. Now, I did look at the paperwork, and Ms. Moret had some great cuts. If all the city council would have been on board, I think the city would have been in a better position today. But unfortunately, one of the names that I didn't see on anything was Deborah Koelll. She did not give one item to cut from, and I was astonished by that. And you have to be creative. You're a city councillor. And if you're not adding or helping or supporting your colleagues, then what are you doing on the city council?
Yes, our budget, okay? Like my colleague said, we have unfunded mandates. Our school department takes 43.3% of our school, our budgets, okay? We have the public safety, i.e. mass fire. It's another big chunk of 13.7. Do you realize that city works on 12.4% of the monies there? That's the services that were provided to the city of New Bedford. So that's very tough. And yes, do I make cuts? Absolutely. When the cuts come down, yes. Do I submit cuts? Absolutely. Like my colleague said, it takes eight of us to get those cuts. Have we cut the budget? Yes. Is it enough? Sometimes, but you do not want to cut the services that are given to the taxpayers also. That's the problem. We are not bringing enough money into the city. Do we need a better economic development team? Absolutely. Do we have it? Does this council have any say in these things? We don't get to hire people, we don't get to fire people. We do two, three things. We can, we can do the ordinances, we can cut the budget, and we set the tax rate. That is it. That's the only things that the city council has the obligation and the power to do. Other than that, we just pound our chest and try to get something done in the city's budget to say, "Hey, listen, we don't want this, okay? But how much cuts can we do without affecting the school department and affecting the residents of New Bedford?" So yes, economic development, another business park, where we'll go. You know, there's talk about putting some at the golf course. Might get some people aggravated because they can't golf on an 18-hole course. But we do have to bring the revenue in, and we do have to look at a stronger economic development team to move forward this engine. Thank you.
So I'm sure most of you know by now that the greatest drain we have in our system is the pensions and the healthcare. That's locked in. There's not much we can do with that. Even though I have mentioned that as far as healthcare goes, a lot of our city workers could stand to have a better lifestyle, and the city should offer some way to compensate for them on their health choices. Also, we have a lot of state mandates. I've been on the council long enough to tell you, cut today, return the money tomorrow. That's how it works, folks. So many times... So many times that happens. We cut, take it down, okay, that's it. I'll give you an example. We did that, and I have institutional knowledge, so I know. One example was a couple of years ago, the council decided to cut on the snowplow fund, you know, for blizzards or anything like that. And I was like, I think the mandate is like $200,000. But we went ahead and cut it. I didn't, because I've been there long enough to know you can't. Well, okay, cut today. Tomorrow, we have to put it back. So I'm just saying that as a councillor, we don't put the budget together. We either vote it up, or we vote it down. And if we vote it down, the administration's gonna find ways to bring it up again. I will say this. I believe in privatization. I've supported it in the past. That's one way we can save money, because if we can put city services out there, we don't have to have the workers, and we don't have to provide everything that's draining us, the pensions and the healthcare, and we do get decent service. That's the way of the future. That's where government is going. Government has to be smaller, and it has to start at a local level. And that's really hard, because everybody wants to be nice to the workers. That's natural for us. But at some point, we have to stop privatizing, because that's the future of our American government. Thank you.
I'm the only candidate, to my knowledge, that pays both residential and commercial taxes. And it's painful. Or maybe I'm not. I bought my first property at age 18. I became a landlord at age 20. I'm now 37. In 20 years of owning real estate, do you know how many times my taxes have gone down? Once, once, following the 2008 crash. I lost $250,000, and my taxes went down by $1,700. I would've traded, I would've traded. Just saying. If we want the taxes to go down, the government has to get smaller. We have a lot of things that we can sell, though. But that's only gonna help us out for a short time. Need to have something coming in consistently. And we don't have that right now. So cutting the taxes is a really difficult chore. You know, a reduction in taxes of $200 a year should be $17 a month. Just $17 would cost us $5 million. I don't see where that's coming from.
Okay, so I only have 90 seconds. I'm not gonna belittle the problems that we have, because we could go on forever on that. How about we just talk innovation a little bit? So I was talking convention center. New Bedford cannot hold 400 people in one spot in the city of New Bedford. That sounds a little outrageous for the size of the city we are. Worcester, Springfield, both have convention centers. I'm not talking TD Garden-type convention centers. I'm talking moderate-sized convention centers. We bring convention center in, and then we bring tourists in. We have plenty in New Bedford to offer tourists when they come in for something. So that's number one. Number two, the city of New Bedford has many assets. Millions and millions of dollars of assets. It's time to start looking at those assets, and either we make money off of them, or we start to sell them. And if we sell them, what do we do? We improve our infrastructure. And if we improve our infrastructure without spending our money, maybe we can freeze the taxes a little bit, okay? Number three, there's a lot of bank-owned property still in the city of New Bedford. The crash is long gone, but I'm telling you, the banks own a lot of property that's still in foreclosure. The city of New Bedford, we need to work with the banks and get those back out into the public's hands. Either one way or the other. Either the public buys them, or we take them over when we can, and we get them back on the tax rolls. This is all opportunity that we have in front of us. Right now, this isn't pie-in-the-sky stuff. This is stuff that we can do right now to get the economic engine going. And again, that's nothing to say the mixed-use property on the waterfront, which I think could be huge and overall life-changing for the city of New Bedford.
All right, ladies and gentlemen. In my private life, I'm a financial planner. What I do for a living is to help my clients minimize their tax exposure. Now, it's a different animal completely at the municipal level. But we need people that have background in finance. We need people that have background in legal, you know, the law. We need people that can sit down and think creatively with one another. And we need to come up with some new ideas. Now, the mayor always talks about the wonderful bond rating the city has. It's great. Best bond rating we've had since FDR was rolling around in a wheelchair at the end of World War II. God rest his soul. But my point to this is we need to take advantage of that. We need to sell some of this debt. Now, that's not gonna solve everything. It's only gonna be a tiny bit. But we need to take advantage of selling out municipal bonds, whether it be general obligation or revenue bonds on projects. I think we can do a better job of figuring out where this debt's gonna go, rather than on the backs of a taxpayer. And I'm very disturbed that some councillors on here have actually rubber-stamped the mayor's budget this year. The job of the councillor is to make budget cuts. So if that's true, then we need some changes on this council. And we need them now.
So when we talk about outside-the-box thinking and ideas for new revenue here in the city of New Bedford, I'm proud of my record in fighting and advocating for mill conversion projects like the Urban Smart Growth Initiative, which if anyone here has been to Pawtucket, Rhode Island, look at the Artist Village and the great things they're doing in there in regard to studio loft spaces, amphitheaters, restaurants, cafes, and so forth. I reached out to those folks. They came down here to New Bedford. They've looked at our mill inventory, and there was some interest. And there continues to be interest. Let's talk about abandoned storefronts and properties in the city like the 7-Eleven on Cushinget Avenue that just packed up their toys and went home about a year and a half ago. I'm working with a company out of East Providence called Urban Greens to come into that spot to bring in family-affordable, fresh, organic groceries at family-affordable prices. I'm working right now with councillor Giesta and some others on trying to bring them down here, and there is an interest. Now, is that the quote-unquote "job" of a city councillor? Not really. But it's incumbent upon us to show some leadership and take the bull by the horns. But I think, you know, some councillors have spoken about it, and they're right. We're a little hamstrung when it comes down to actually bringing in the revenue. We can file motions, we can hold meetings, show people around. But I think that really plays to what our role is. And again, you talk about setting a tax rate. You talk about approving a budget. But let's talk about constituent service. I think that gets undervalued sometimes. Making sure that your concerns are valid, and you're open, and you're transparent, and your concerns are heard by the city council.
Okay, thank you very much. Closing statements. It's one-minute closing. Let's see. You started?
Yes.
On the opening. Mr. Jensen will have the first closing. He's the one-minute closer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a vested interest in this community? That's the question. Forty-plus years of running for public office. That's my vested interest. I put myself up for public ridicule by some here tonight. I won't mention their names, but... Yeah, so what this city needs, and I'll reiterate what I said, we need new revenue. The bottom line to a successful community is new revenue. We're not getting that with this economic development team. We're not getting it. They need to go bye-bye. All right. I'm gonna respectfully ask the people of this community to give me a chance this year. Because if I don't get elected this year, this is it for me. I mean, I'm... This is it. I probably should've run for mayor this time, but I didn't. Probably should've. But I put myself up for 40-some-odd years now. So I think it's time for the electorate to smarten up and show up to vote. 90-plus percent of the people of this community who are registered to vote, why are you registered if you're not gonna show up and go vote? So I'm respectfully asking the people that are gonna get up and go to the polls for their vote on November 5th. Thank you very much.
I ask the people of the city to continue the strong voice that they have on the city council. You may not agree with me on everything, but you know that I'm a voice. And I'm a voice for you when nobody else is speaking, whether it's in the neighborhood, whether it's a crime issue, whether it's parallel products, whether it's Ernestina Wood, and it goes on and on and on. I'm a voice to be heard. And when my voice is heard, most of the time, there's action. I'm gonna give you a simple one. I stood in city council not too long ago, and I told you that the city was broken. And I told you to look at the sidewalk in front of City Hall. It was all cracked. It's being fixed. All you had to do was open your mouth, right? My whole point is here, I love the city. I love the neighborhoods. I love knowing what I know. I know every neighborhood from the back of my hand, like the back of my hand, because I go into those neighborhoods. When there's an issue, I know it. I feel it, and I taste it. That way, I know how to address it on the city council. Some have said tonight that it's taxes, budget, and this that you do. I've always talked about governing. If somebody's not governing, I'm gonna step forward, and I'm gonna do so. I'll continue to do that. On November 5th, I'd like the opportunity to return and continue the good work that I've done over the past decades that I've enjoyed doing and enjoyed serving the people of this city. And not for one minute did I take anything. I was a giver. I gave everything I had. Thank you very much.
So I'm gonna stand behind the table. So I would like the opportunity to return to my role as a New Bedford city councillor. I hope that the people in the city of New Bedford recognize that over the last 14 years, I've dedicated myself to improving my city, that I've been a leader on the New Bedford city council, and I've been an independent voice. And oftentimes, in city council votes, that vote has been 10-1, and I've been the person being the 1. So I'm proud of my record on the New Bedford city council. I've worked hard. I hope I've earned your vote because of my actions over the time that I've served. And I hope that you'll give me the honor and the privilege to continue to serve on the city council, to try to make New Bedford the best place that it can be for your family and mine, a place we're very proud to call our home. On November 5th, I ask you for your vote in the Moretta Council at Large.
I wasn't gonna do it, ladies and gentlemen. I'm not gonna be intimidated by you, Gomes. You're not gonna stare at me in front of these people. I'm gonna tell you right now, you've intimidated many people in the city council. Mason Almeida, women at your old passing Luke's Hospital. You were fired for sexual harassment. You should step down and deal with it.
Hey, wait, wait. I'm gonna take that right out of your hand. Give me that.
Ladies and gentlemen.
It's your right now. He's already done what he's done.
I'm not gonna be intimidated.
You can't allow a piece of human feces like this to ruin your debate.
Mike, sit down.
I got a minute, right?
You have 20 seconds. You've already used your five seconds.
Gomes has been intimidating people for years. He sat here and stared at me. I think I behaved myself today.
Deal with the issue, please.
And I didn't mention this man at all. He should step aside as he deals with this court case for sexual harassment.
About what you've done in your past.
You know what the difference is between me and him, Mike? I've admitted my wrongs and corrected them.
Mr. Phillips.
Thank you.
Time's up. Thank you.
An idiot like that. We'll stare at someone else. I'm leaving too. I'm not an 80-year-old nurse. Come on, please.
All right, Gomes? Don't intimidate me, bro.
Scary, quiet, please. One minute.
You threatening me?
Excuse me. I got the floor.
Well, I'll ask you to leave.
You're threatening me?
No, he didn't threaten me.
You threatened yourself in that spot.
If you're not gonna be a gentleman and civil, I'll ask you to leave.
Good evening, everyone. I am Deborah Coelho. I am your city councillor at large, and I am a very positive person and a very positive woman. I believe New Bedford is on the move. I am very proud to say that we have a beautiful waterfront. We have Satkin Mills on Washburn that is being developed. We have luxury apartments. People want to move into New Bedford. They're coming behind a warm set of lofts. Drive by, it's looking good. We got all-revealed copper and brass, which is bringing new life. We got a new public safety center coming in. All these things don't happen overnight. This is day-to-day management that I've been proud to be for the past 14 years. No, I didn't do it by myself. I am part of a great team. This is what we do. I'm really also very, very happy to say that I have been independent in the council. I do not fundraise. I am yours. I'm solely yours. I always have your best interests at heart. I would ask that you would please reelect Deborah Coelho, your city councillor at large, come November 5th. I am a very, very, very good representation of the city of New Bedford. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, councillor Coelho. I was just a little too close to it first. Needed a little break. But hello, everybody. My name is Naomi Carney, and I am your city councillor at large. I am hardworking and dedicated to my community. New Bedford matters to me. I grew up here. I love New Bedford. I put my heart and soul into what I do on the city council. I'm looking for you to reelect me on November 5th. New Bedford has come a long way. Look at our waterfront. We have new businesses coming in here. Do we need more? Absolutely. Are we working hard to get it here? Absolutely. Do we have a real coming in, and we're gonna bring new people into New Bedford? Absolutely. I think that things are turning around in the city. It's been a good team that I've been working with over the last six years. We've moved forward. We haven't looked backwards. We continue to strive to make New Bedford a better place for your family, for my family. I love New Bedford. I'm here to stay, and I'm here to work for you, every single one of you. You got my phone number. If you need me, you call me. I'm there. Constituent service is number one, and everything else falls right in. Quality of life is what every one of you deserve in this room, and I'm gonna make sure you get it. Naomi Carney, city councillor at Large. Please cast a vote for me on November 5th. Thank you very much.
Our city is amazing. Our buildings may be older, but they have history. This is where America began. Imagine the first settlers coming across the ocean, having no idea what the other shore had in wait for them. But having the confidence to know that they could work hard enough to live, work, raise their families, to grow, to prosper. I feel we've lost that confidence. We've lost the feeling of optimism, the feeling like anything is possible with just a little bit of hard work and effort. We were whalers once. We supplied the lamp oil that lit the nation. New Bedford, we held the torch that lit the nation. Now, we fear change. We fight change. We're uncertain of our future. But we need to pick that torch back up. We need to empower one another. We need to take our city back. We've allowed corporations, state agencies, absentee investors to take our city from us. Now, they're the ones calling the shots. But we're the ones here. It's our children in these schools. It's our roads their trucks are driving on. It's our homes they're pricing us out of. We need to take back our city. We need to take back our homes. We need to take back our schools. We need to take back our city.
So I'd like to thank everybody here this evening for attending.
I'd like to thank those watching live as well. And my name is Paul Chase. I'm running for city council. My wife Lisa and I have raised our family here. We love it. In that time that we've raised our family, we, like many other people, have volunteered with nonprofit services. We volunteered through the city schools. We've done a numerous amount of volunteering throughout the years. And now I wanna take that service, now that my children are older and pretty much self-sustaining. I'd like to take that service to the city council and to the city of New Bedford. And I bring with that an economic development background, which I think is so key and important in this day and age. And I wanna bring that forward, and I wanna help the city in any way I can through constituent services and through new ideas. I said in the beginning that there's 100,000 or nearly 100,000 people in this city, and that every so often, we could use a little bit of change on the city council. And I wholeheartedly agree with that. I was number six in the preliminary. I'm only off by one, so I'm asking for your vote. I'd like to get in and make a change in the city of New Bedford. My name is Paul Chase, November 5th. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Leo Choquet. And I'd like to thank Mr. Buddy Andre for putting this together, and New Bedford Guide for promoting it and airing it around the world. Thank you. All the sideshow stuff aside, and all the rah-rah, happy speeches that we can all sit up here and make, there's one undeniable fact. Nothing in this city is gonna change until we get the property taxes down to some degree. If a business wants to work, come here. They have a choice to locate in many different places in this state. And we have the eighth-highest commercial tax rate in the Commonwealth. Business owners don't care that this is the city that lit the world, or that, you know, person A loves the city, and person B loves it. They're independent thinkers. They want to go where they can make the most money. They are not going to come here at $36 per 1,000. It's not gonna happen. We need councillors that are not afraid to cut the budget. We need councillors that have a financial background and a legal background that understand how government works. We have not had this for a little while, anyway. Now, again, I don't have all the answers. And there are a lot of fine people that currently serve on this council. I'm not here to point fingers at anybody. But we need change.